...the order. Your call, please.
Trustee Hargit.
Here.
Trustee Levin.
Here.
Trustee Maravella.
Here.
Trustee McCarthy.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Trustee Whitmore.
Here.
And Mayor Brubaker.
Here. Please stand for tonight's invocation and pledge allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Pastor Tim Blackrock of Lockton Church. All right, we might pray with me, please.
Father, we come before you right now, and God has, this is kind of an exciting night, actually, as we've been through a lot over the last year through this pandemic season, and the fact that the doors are open again and the community is gathering tonight, Lord, it's kind of a special occasion. So we thank you for your hand of blessing upon this city and the community. God, tonight, as we go through this meeting and all the different agenda items, and even in the swearing in of individuals, Lord, I pray that this would be just a blessing to this community and a glorification to you. God, we thank you again for all the blessings that you give us, and pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. I need a motion to approve and make for 2021 Berkshire Regular Board Meeting Minutes.
So.
Second, any discussion on minutes? Your call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maravella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Mayor's report. Chief Rocky Campanella, please come forward.
I'll make my way around there. I'm standing right here. I'll just stand away from him, who's actually...
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Rocky Campanella.
Having been appointed to the office of Fire Chief.
Having been appointed to the office of Fire Chief.
In the village of Winter Harbor.
In the village of Winter Harbor.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Winter Harbor.
And the ordinances of the village of Winter Harbor.
And that I will well.
And that I...
I will well.
I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, trustees, administrator, for having the confidence in me. I'm very excited to do this. Since I was a little guy, always wanted to be a fireman and a fire chief, and here I am. I hope I can make you guys proud and lead this department forward in a good way, and make it a fire department everybody can continue to be proud of. And I'm very thankful for my parents. My dad was a volunteer fireman for forever, and a fire detective trustee. And my father-in-law, Paul, was also a fireman, and they pushed education and being a good person. And actually, Bill Beecham, Deputy Chief Beecham, can you come in here? Bill Beecham's, I, Bill Beecham took me to the hospital when I was four years old when I found out I was allergic to tree nuts. So he's been like my idol, one of the idols of the fire service, and now I get to tell him what to do.
We should be married again.
So, um, thank you to my kids. It's gonna take a lot of time, but I have a good support system and... That's it. I want to thank all the guys that showed their support tonight for not only me, but the officers being sworn in from the Winter Harbor. I'm actually on duty at Zion today. I'm a full-time fireman at Zion. I shouldn't extend my thanks to you. The shift came up to show their support. I appreciate that. And here we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, you have the oath of authority. I don't have that.
I'd like to thank my son Carson, who just reminded me of anything. Make sure it's reflected in the minute. Very official, I think. Brandon Martin, newly appointed Assistant Chief. Brandon, I'm being new here. I don't have a lot of history on these guys, but I know they're good, and we're in good hands with them. Especially Brandon has been very helpful to me in the past couple of weeks of getting acclimated. You ready? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Brandon Martin.
I, Brandon Martin.
Having been appointed to.
Having been appointed to.
The office of Assistant Fire Chief.
Yes, Office of Assistant Fire Chief.
In the village of Winter Harbor.
In the village of Winter Harbor.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
Atperset, do solemnly swear.
Atperset, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Winter Harbor.
And the ordinances of the village of Winter Harbor.
And that I will well.
And that I will.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Brandon, would you like to choose your, who's giving you your pin today? Can I have a lovely wife's share? Sorry.
Oh, that's dangerous.
Probably wrong.
I got it. No blood.
Kelly? Kelly? Raise your right hand.
I, Kelly Stone.
I, Kelly Stone.
Have been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
Been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
In the village of Winter Harbor.
In the village of Winter Harbor.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
Atperset.
Atperset.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will defend, certainly, the state of Illinois.
You don't wear a lot of time.
No, I don't know. Normally.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Winter Harbor.
Ordnance of the village of Winter Harbor.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
This is Kelly's husband, Kena. He's the Assistant Chief here as well. We'll do the penning. Careful. Thank you for now. And the real star of the night, Eamon Raffa. Eamon's, one of his first outings, I assume, tonight after a car accident a few weeks ago in Kenosha. And we're very happy to have him here. He's healing, and we couldn't be more excited to have him here to give us badge for Lieutenant. Pretty little, raise your right hand.
Yes.
I, Eamon Raffa.
I, Eamon Raffa.
Having been appointed to the office of Fire Lieutenant.
Having been appointed to the Fire Lieutenant.
In the village of Winter Harbor.
In the village of Winter Harbor.
In the county of Lake, Atperset.
In the county of Lake, Atperset.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Winter Harbor.
And the ordinances of the village of Winter Harbor.
And that I will well.
I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. I'll get out of your ass away.
This is Liz, who's also a member of our department.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to do this here.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for all that came in tonight. I mean.
Yep.
Especially Ahmad. And Alum. Thank you.
You might quick get one picture and make sure.
Sorry?
You might quick get one quick picture here with my dad and run along with him.
No, okay.
Please, see, that's okay. And then we'll take a quick picture. We'll get everyone. They gotta continue with their meeting, so... Sorry, guys.
No, 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 take my time.
Don't hurry, Charlie. Don't hurry. It's an exciting day.
I want a big picture for it.
Thank you. Hang on, I read the...
Yeah, this is Rocky. But you take your mask off. Maya, take off your mask.
They'll follow the reading. There you go.
She's in the hospital. You gotta save her.
Smile. Well, all right.
Changed up, uh, he's got a dark trunk now. He used to be in that bright one, and now he's got that dark one. I can barely read the letters.
Well, that was a friend, I think.
How I see you going down to the lakefront.
Good.
Read your letter.
Hey, how are you guys? Congratulations.
Thank you.
One, two, three. I didn't have a couple of them on my...
I don't, I'm looking at them like, did you try something?
All right.
You're not gonna be funny if I run into you.
We move on. Next item. I need a motion to set aside the rules of President and Board of Trustees to weigh the first and second readings of ordinance demanding section thirty dot one zero of municipal call for the Winter Harbor, changing the regular meetings of the Village Board.
So.
Second. Any discussion on that? It's just, we've been discussing this for quite a while, correct? Is that regarding the change in eliminating one meeting, just going one meeting a month?
Yes, sir.
The agenda items have been pretty scarce, so we're going to just go to the third Tuesday every month.
And in talking to the village attorney, you know, if a meeting arises for us to have an additional meeting, the village to have an additional meeting in the course of a month, the village board is...
Yeah, I mean, the only reaction I had to it was we're taking one opportunity away, but this is about the largest crowd we've had in quite some time. It's usually nights like this where there's, you know, things being sworn in and that sort of thing. But there are still opportunities for access, and we'll still have that, you know, one meeting a month. So I think as long as it's something that we kind of keep a pulse on and revisit if we need to come here.
I know. That's one of the comments I had, because we've always had two meetings a month, and, you know, going down to one. I asked about the warrant, but she said the warrant, one, 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 one a month is gonna be enough.
Well, actually, one a month works out better for the village.
Right, okay. We don't have to write this many checks, right?
Well, it's not only that. We need to keep the money in the bank, or...
Exactly. But, yeah, we discussed this for probably over a year. We decided to, you know, we can have special meeting if we need, if something comes, comes about. So, very good. Uh, motion second. I just need a roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maravella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Very good. We move on to the next item. I need a motion to set aside the rules of the President and Board of Trustees to weigh the first and second readings of ordinance repealing and replacing section thirty dot zero three of the municipal call of Winter Harbor modernizing the Village Board Committee structure.
So.
Second. We also discussed this for quite a while. The, uh, the items, the different committees are gonna be Public Works and Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, Administration, and Community Development. Trying to work out, you know, trustees for the departments. We talked about this for a while, and so there'll be a chairperson and then a trustee. I mean, two trustees, but one will be a chair and one will be a sitting trustee. So under Public Works and Parks and Recreation, appointing chair is gonna be Trustee Maravella, and sitting trustee would be Trustee Whitmore. Under Public Safety, the chair will be Dan McCarthy, and the sitting trustee will be Trustee Weiss. And under Administration and Community Development, the chair will be Trustee Hargit, and sitting trustee would be Trustee Levin. Okay? Not to say we can make changes or can't make changes, we can down the road if we find the need to do that, so. All right, so I have a motion second. I just need a roll.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What would, um, would there be anything in there as far as the meetings and schedule as far as, like, actually holding committee meetings? Because now you're creating, we're creating new committees, basically, right?
Correct.
Would there be a set schedule, or would it be as needed?
I think, as we talked about it, it would be at the discretion of the chair and the sitting trustee.
Exactly.
Based on the issues that were coming up, whether it would be financial operations, ordinances that may, if a, certain ordinance wanted to be presented to the board, that they would convene for that purpose.
So would there be certain protocols as far as what the department has, would want brought up at a village meeting, that should go through the committee first? Or is it still the way the department has now, that they can go through your office?
That's part of the agenda. That's correct.
But there's, is there any type of requirement, or is it simply advisory, if they feel it's something they would want to do?
Or, or there was something that the, that they believe that the individual committees needed to lobby or push aggressively for. For example, a perfect example of this would be what we just had when we were talking with Trustee Levin and Trustee Weiss on fire department staffing and service delivery. Public Safety Committee, because of something of that magnitude, rather than convening a special committee or creating a special committee, the Public Safety Committee would take that and look at it and run with it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, because there's not a whole lot of, I'm not, I go along, I'm just curious about how it like, whether there will be meetings, or what, you know, where we'll find the need to have it, you know?
But I, I would, I would suggest, I would say this, Trustee McCarthy, that the amount of time I spend on the phone communicating with the trustees, some of those would be handled by committee meetings.
Okay.
You know, when we turn around and I'll call up our public safety issuer myself, and Trustee Hargit had been most recently working on, put, that he's gonna address later, to put together the beer garden ordinance, as well as the food truck ordinance for presentation report. Those are the type of things that would potentially spur a call for a committee meeting.
Yeah, I think that's, when I look at this, there are two things that came to mind. One is, there can initially be a reaction of, well, I've been in this seat for six years now, and it's been this way, right? We've had the same structure. So I appreciate the willingness to say, maybe there's a different way. And I do think having two trustees over, you know, at the committee with the department heads, which should lead to more collaboration. You know, so now for me and John being able to work together and talk these things through and have different perspectives, different voices on the same topics that, and working through some of that before it gets here, you know? So I, I think it should lead to more collaboration.
And I, and I would, I concur, from the administrator's perspective, concur with Trustee Hargit. I think in the past, with, before the village adopted the village administrator management style, the, each trustee had a respective department that they worked for that they, that the department head could have a tone to it with that. Now with the administrator there, that, that fulfills that function and the purpose of the board as policymakers. And one of the most significant policies that the board deals with, obviously, is budget. So it is the most important policy that, that any governing body deals with. This gives, this frees up the board as well to focus on policies. Trustee Hargit has had conversations with me about obsolete ordinances. Our attorney-in-law, we looked back, and I think he put it into his memo regarding this ordinance, that we had committees on the book from nineteen seventy-six or, that had never even convened. And so we had obsolete ordinances that had been out there for forty-five years. So this also gives the Village Board an opportunity to go back and look at the ordinances that we currently have in place, that sometimes people come before the board and have questions as to the validity or why we're doing those, and take a second look at some of these and say, okay, it makes sense the way it is, or it may need to change. So it allows the policymaking opportunity to be enhanced for the, for the elected body.
But if I can pick up that, that same theme, and more to your initial question, Trustee McCarthy, there's nothing that says that committees can't meet, or that they shouldn't meet on a regular, regular schedule. I would suggest that the best possible practice is to encourage regular meetings at meet times, just as the board is required by law, to meet at times committed to the public, that there be publication of these meetings beforehand. You don't have to have a complicated agenda, but there should be, you know, some of the, feel free to obey the formalities and make it a little more structured. I mean, one of the biggest problems we've had, frankly, is when I look back at that code section, when they asked me to revise this, I not only realized we had obsolete committees, but we haven't even followed that committee structure that's in the code book for at least twenty-five years. Because I know it wasn't in place when I got here, and, and nothing ever changed during that whole period of time. It was always done in a different fashion, which made sense, as the administrator pointed out, in a distributed power setting, where you had only a few people and you didn't have some central head that really ran the village. Now that you have that, it allows you to stand back just a little bit and be much more like a general rather than a private in the army. So you can kind of take a look and see a bigger picture, and break to the board and beat the advocate, and try to get across the idea of your department needs X. And you're gonna have to fight somebody else that says his department needs Y. And somebody else is gonna say his department needs Z. And that's what, that's what this budgeting debate is really all about, and that's, that's the dedication of the resources that you should be having in a discussion, because that better favors what the village itself actually is.
So we have special meetings. We still can only meet with two people. Otherwise, if we do three, you have a quorum.
Well, correct.
You can only do...
Unless you post the meeting.
That's what I was gonna get at. That's why you said, so if we post it, then everybody can come and have a say in it. But if we're just collaborating, it can only be them two. You can't involve the third person in it.
Well, that's correct. And you gotta remember that these board, that these committees cannot exercise any independent judgment and take any action, or they move into, from a purely advisory committee that has this flexibility, into one that is structured and meets regularly and has responsibility. And now you have an open meetings act issue, even if there's only two of you, where you gotta have rules and all the rest of the stuff. And that isn't gonna work. That just isn't gonna work in Village of this.
To, and I think the village attorney would agree that in my past experience as county administrator, as well as a city manager, our, our elected body had regularly scheduled meetings. I think because this was new to the board, to be presumptuous and choose a schedule would have been, you know, would have been quite frankly presumptuous on the part of staff to, you know, offer that up. But, that being said, that the success of those other organizations were in great part attributed to the fact that the committees met on a regular basis and understood what was going on, though they weren't necessarily involved with the day-to-day operations by virtue of, you know, their working jobs and their position. The lines of communication were open, and pressing issues got brought to the front, and they reacted to much quicker, quite honestly. And as, as we move forward to change the direction of the village in a number of areas, the policy and division session we've got coming up, and policies that accompany that, and break them down by departments, a regular, a regular schedule, even if it's every two months versus every month, in my opinion, it serves the body of the taxpayer as well.
Now, these committee assignments are effective as of the...
As soon as, as soon as the board says I do, or the board... As soon as, as soon as the board says I do, or the board says yay.
So I have the, when I, when I call on the different committee reports, the new people?
The new chair.
On tonight's?
Oh, no, I would, I would.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Effective as of next meeting or two hours?
I think that's right, though.
Okay. Wanted to clarify. All right. All right. Any other discussion on that? All right, roll call.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Weiss?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. So we move on to village administrator's report.
Just have a few things, Mr. Mayor, before we move on. Website, Basecamp Solutions is complete with their work. Mike Chee has now received, started to receive the last of the content for input, including what needs to be uploaded in the library, we're, we're right there to be done. We wanted to have it done by May 15th, it's going to just be, we're pretty close, a week, a week. So the new website will be up and running, we'll do some PR to launch it, we'll get some communication out. It's an impressive website and it serves as the base for us to begin using an e-government portal so people can start doing their government transactions, permits, things like that across the web versus having to come in 15 different times to resolve an issue. So we're pretty excited about that. I sent out information and received most, a majority of the board's responses on committee of the hall for the second review of the budget. This is based off the board's direction to bring the budget down to the baseline number. I, I sent the documents out, some of the trustees have already had a conversation with me regards to those documents. I think you'll find in there that the senior staff were aggressive in meeting the objectives of the board, though there are still items that need to be discussed and directions to be received from the board as how the board wants us to proceed. Wage policy ordinance is complete just pending the approval of the draft budget as will be the appropriation ordinance and then the completed draft budget for adoption by the village board. Ordinance reviews, I'll defer to trustee Hargit's report on the, as he and I've had conversations on our progress really related to that. Fourth of July parade, new committee spearheading that fourth of July parade, including the village clerk. We're working out logistics with Virginia Lopez, but we are now starting to work towards either Saturday or Sunday, we're, we're confirming the date. And then once we confirm the date, we'll give the requirements to get access to Lake, I'm sorry, to Bank Street from the Lake County Highway Department. The mayor had asked for this last year and we fell into the pandemic, the mayor and state representative Mason have worked to bring in mobile driver services into Winter Harbor. They are targeting two to three different days in the month of August, which will allow seniors to get access for ID cards, which if you're a senior citizen are free, access to renew your driver's license and things of that nature.
That's the secretary of state bringing in a mobile?
That's correct.
Driver's license? Not driver's license, they're not giving road tests.
No, it's not for seniors of 70, but that's correct.
Yeah, they're not giving road tests anybody.
Yeah, it's a renewal of a driver's license if you just need a simple renewal and that's not the seniors, you can just turn around and, and they, and they're apparently by August because they gave us a list of everything, so they'll be able to do it. Again, I know we got an expert in J, so I defer, I defer to J. Swaco landfill, the mayor and I and village attorney long are entering into discussions again with GFI and future of our, of the expansion as well as the tipping fees. I received one response that of not, I haven't received everybody's response yet about July 5th, I'm sorry, June 5th for the vision and strategy session. Just received one today that there's scheduling conflicts, so I'll revisit that with the board members. And we're tentatively scheduled for our police chiefs interviews on the 25th. And I'll be talking with the village attorney as well as chief Belinski as part of that panel as to our, our proceeding on that item.
On the 25th of May?
Yes, that's correct. And that's all I had at this time, Mr. Mayor.
One question, Greg. The committee of the hall, it's, we're having a live meeting tonight, why is that, why is that a Zoom meeting?
I thought it was because it was six o'clock, sending a lot of the flexibility for the, for the board members as well as staff.
Okay.
Cause the mayor had the entire staff here for, for purposes of budget.
Okay. Just ask.
And if the board finds a compelling reason why, you know, or a reason that they believe is necessary to bring it, we can do that. We would have to rotate the staff in and out just, you know, we want to make sure we've got that, but.
We'll do Zoom.
We want to ease into the Zoom first.
Yeah, hey, hey, I just figured I'd ask because we're doing a live tonight, you know? We could spread it out, I mean, but, you know, it's okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Greg.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so we move on to clerks' correspondence. All right, no old business, we'll move on to new business, committee reports, finance, trustee Weiss.
Thank you.
Last time.
Last time, right? Thank you. I make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant 2021-2 in the amount of $145,720.67.
Okay, discussion on the board. All right. Roll call.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Weiss?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Simply I make a motion that we approve the engagement of industrial appraisal company for appraisal of the village capital assets and I guess the last time we've done this was 2009, so we need to, we need to get this updated.
Second, any discussion? I have one question. How'd we save 10%?
Uh, because of our general like, general liability insurance as a partner with this firm and this firm did the previous appraisal too and to trustee Weiss's point, we're going through, we're looking at paperwork and we're looking at the valuation of our capital assets and depreciation, especially in compliance with the GASB requirements and turning around and finding out that should we have an insurance claim on certain pieces, we may not be able to fully justify the cost of, of the item. So it's the most, it's, it's, it's extremely important we proceed with this.
My other question is, we're doing appraisal on the buildings too, structures, correct?
Structure, all capital assets.
Should we wait till the public works building is put in before we do it or we have to do another one when that's in?
No, we would amend, amend the appraisal.
All right. Okay. Any other question? All right, roll call.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Weiss?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'll try and do approve the dockets or ordinance as one vote or those need to be separate?
I couldn't quite pick that up.
When we vote to approve the PZB docket and the ordinance as, as one vote for each of these or?
No, I don't, just.
Separate votes?
I would, I would accept the recommendation or move to accept the, the board's recommendation into the record and then vote on the ordinance separately.
All right.
Except to get into the record just means you're.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they said.
All right. Well, I will move to accept into the record the approved, PZB approval of docket 04-PZB-21 at request for a special use permit to operate a place of amusement in a B3 zoning district.
Second, second, mayor, discussion? This is for which item?
So we're going to have two different ones here. The, the first one here and the ordinance that'll follow in just a minute is for a laser tag business. So both that we'll talk about today are in Harbor Plaza, which has the B3 zoning and so they are both requesting special use for amusement, one for laser tag, one for indoor skate park. What I will say, having attended the PZB meeting, is the operators for both of these are experienced entrepreneurs that it, it came across very clearly in the meeting, they know what they're talking about. The, the plan for, focused on a laser tag here, you know, it will provide another family-friendly entertainment option in town. There will be some light retail with, with both of these, but it's, it's not the, the core business. For the laser tag, it's, the primary business will be the laser tag operation. They also will have a kind of black light glow room for glow parties, glow dodgeball, which sounds like something we should do as a board, like just as a team building after lights. But, so yeah, it's unanimously was good.
Okay. Questions? I, I was going to ask about the dodgeball, I saw the pictures in the back and that's how that, kind of cooperating that back.
Yeah, the, the one thing I will say, this, this came off of the PZB as well, is this is our only B3 zoning district that has a gym in it. You know, I mean, there are a couple of non-retail based operators already there and so I think we just have to acknowledge that these are good things that add value to the community, even though they aren't sales tax driven industries, right? The hope is that they, now where we still have another large unit there that more traffic will, will kind of benefit everyone in the plaza and potentially attract another anchor to that, to that other unit, right?
Also, I mean, the fact that those spaces haven't been filled with resale incomes or sales tax generating businesses in the past, so.
So when our skate park outside skate park closes, they'll be able to use this indoor skate park?
Give a kid something more to do. Basically, while I'm looking at it, as you give her an outlet towards they have.
So in a skate park, they can skate off.
We'll get to the skate park, but yes, first, right now we're on laser tags and.
Okay, you're right.
Yeah, laser tags, glow, everything, so, yeah, no, it's very exciting.
Yes, it is. All right. Any other comments? All right. Roll call, please.
First, this is just voting to, to approve it into the record.
Except for, for recommendations. All right. Need a motion, or, or roll call, sorry.
Okay, Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Weiss?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right.
All right, now I'll make a motion and set aside any first or second readings to approve an ordinance granting a special use permit for the laser tag business.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Weiss?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. I got that one.
All right, make motion to approve into the rec- record docket 05-PZB-21, request for a special use permit to operate a place of amusement in a B3 zoning district.
Second. All right, discussion.
So this is the indoor skate park, so this, to, to the point, it does provide an option in the colder weather for, for those that enjoy the outdoor, but also the, the professionalism demonstrated by this particular operator, I think it's going to attract people year round. They talked about running camps, they, they've run a number of facilities like this and around the state, four cities and, and well, it's private operations. So I, I think this is one that, yeah, I, I already peeked in the window and saw something else going up, you know, it's, it's pretty fun to, you know, you can already picture kids, you know, hitting deck of flavors and, and that these businesses will complement that really well, so. It will be, there were some concerns discussed at the PZB around noise related to the post office there. Operator seems completely willing to address any needs there that are defined to, to make sure that's not an issue. And the way they described it, I think with, with both of these, you can have a picture in your head of what you think a skate park is going to be like, but then when they talk about running, running camps and those kinds of, where you're having to give instruction, it's not like you're going to have music blaring because you're giving instructions, right? They have to be able to listen. So the other concern that was raised was skateboarding in the parking lot. And, and there's a certain amount of that, of someone coming from their car eagerly to the building, right? That can't be avoided, but there's no plans by the business to operate any portion of the business out in the parking lot.
The mail desk is to the far north too, so shouldn't be that, if you're worried about your hearing at the desk, is that what you're worried about?
The, the postal area in general was the concern raised, but I, I agree, I, I don't think that the noise will be a concern, but the operator was, was clearly committed to being a, a good neighbor and, and doing whatever they need to, to run a good professional operation.
What's the docket, since you have that skate park indoor?
How many people?
Yes.
Capacity.
Just curious.
I have no idea. That'll be a question for Rocco later. Yeah.
Yeah. Hargit? Any other questions?
I, I will also add for, for anyone up here who may want to take up skateboarding, they did say this is not just something for, for kids or for youth, so any of you that may be looking for an adult camp, that may be an opportunity, so.
He specifically mentioned that it went up to 55, which excludes.
I need my arms, and my hands.
We also need to make sure we're staffed in the firehouse for any of the board members receiving.
We will stick to dodgeball.
Yeah, I'll do dodgeball. All right. All right, roll call, please.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Weiss?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Hargit. Move on to fire.
Thanks, guys, we got work to do.
Trustee Levin?
With the motion for approval of the automatic fire mutual aid agreement between First Protection District and the village of both departments.
Right. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor? First Fire Protection District, if that's okay.
Mr. Mayor, our new fire chief was doing an assessment over at the firehouse and certainly we know we've made a conscious effort to, and continue to make a conscious effort to identify funding opportunities or mutual aid opportunities to support the water operations for rescue, fire rescue down at the lake. Chief Campanella made contact with the fire chief in Antioch and found a way we can have cooperative agreement through this mutual aid agreement to enhance our ability to respond with the necessary equipment should a water rescue be required. And then I'll defer to Chief Campanella if he needs to add anything further.
Thank you, mayor trustees. This is an auto aid agreement with Antioch Fire Department, they're also called the First Fire Protection District, I don't know why, but they have the nearest boat capable of handling some Lake Michigan water safely. A lot of these boats are share little Zodiacs, ones, inflatables. They have a nice Boston Whaler with an exit fire pump on it. It's a long ways away, but I thought do our diligence, we have the season coming up on us right now and get some auto. So on receipt of a emergency down at the lake, as we're being toned out to respond down there, they should be getting that information to Antioch automatically and getting them on the road down here. So that should reduce a lot of time in the, in the event this happens. I know from being in the area, we're down there quite a bit in the summer, there's a large exposure. I can't underestimate the need of a vessel for this department and I get everybody trained hopefully, staff, on the fire departments looking into that, but for now, this is what we have to play with and I think it's an improvement going forward to have somebody come in auto.
Just to jog the board's memory, we applied for the AFG grant on this a couple of years ago and the FEMA had, may prioritize what they thought was the necessary equipment to be given out grant wise to different departments, most of it being first response suppression equipment, engines, trucks, things to that nature, some things would turn out here depending if there was a rural fire department that lacks, you know, and is dealing with 1950's equipment or whatnot. And rescue boats that were initially a priority because of the demand for the money was put down on the list. We continue to look at opportunities through the AFG grants. I know Chief Campanella's predecessor was looking for potential funding to not only secure a boat, but to potentially secure our engine where we know we, we're about due to do something with that engine. So just to assure the board that we continue to look at opportunities to potentially secure a boat for, for the fire department. And basically it was, it was all Chief Street's fault, so.
I don't know what you're talking about, but I hear that a lot now.
It actually, it doesn't care now, he vouchs it, a lot of options for use and surplus boats from the government have been exhausted, so we're trying our best to get something, but this is where we're at.
Yeah, good job, chief, getting that boat from Antioch, I mean, at least we have something if we need it, that can go beyond the, you know, red wall, you know?
It actually, it doesn't care now, he, he vows it, a lot of options for use, and, uh, surplus boats from the government have been exhausted, so we're trying our best to get something, but this is where we're at.
Yeah, good job chief, uh, getting that boat from Antioch, I mean, at least we have something.
Yes.
If we need it, that, that can go beyond the, you know, break wall, you know, need be.
My chief is also looking at DLA, so, put that up to you as well.
Right. All right, any other questions on this item? And I'll ask for a roll call.
Target?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you trustee Levin. Next item is public comments, uh, capacity, provide us your name, and your address.
Rich Pooman, representing the BFW eleven twelve, Sharon Grove, I got a question tonight, why does there have to be a new ordinance on the outside seating for the bars?
What do you mean, uh, uh, outside seating?
To drink outside.
Well, right now, during the pandemic, we have a.
Right, we have that.
But once that ends, the outside seating's gonna go away.
But you've had, you've had businesses here in town before the pandemic, mayor, having seating outside and drinking, way before this pandemic, so I don't think it's fair to the people that have been here and have supported this village to where we have to wait now. I was trying to get this done, I asked what I need to do, and I got told, I gotta wait on Nordans, I just spent thirteen hundred dollars to do a nice setup out there, and now I gotta tear it down because the ordinance probably won't be ready until whenever, and I don't think it's fair to the businesses that support this village.
Certain liquor licenses allow you to be outside drinking, but not all liquor licenses allow that.
But on, on, on your liquor license, it says H outside, you also, on the other page, it says, all we would have to supply is a diagram, that's already on there, so that's why I don't understand.
That's incorrect, the G license require, you have to have a G license before you can have an H license, and the G license requires that sixty percent of your sales are food sales, that's in the ordinance.
Right, and that's been that way for years, many years.
So for the, for the restaurant owners that have that license already, there, there's no change, what's being discussed is, what was put in place during, as, as part of the emergency order was to allow that for bar license, the tavern license holders, right, and so, we, I met with Greg on this earlier today to try and get this to some resolution, so we anticipate at the June meeting, having that ordinance here for the board to vote on, that would extend that to the tavern license holders, so.
See, I didn't know that, that's why.
Yeah.
I heard tonight.
I was getting to that.
Oh, sorry, sorry, mayor.
No, that's okay.
I got one other thing, and it's, goes back to the ordinance, you started going back to the ordinances again, looking at, I heard tonight that someone more than twenty-five years old, or something like that, you're in Dayton, I have a problem with the planning and zoning board, I have one, as a business, I have one piece of property that is only taxed, and I, and I do not see where the village can't change it automatically, that one piece of property that I got is only residential, you can't get to it, but only going through the front of Sharon Road to the back, now there's a fence up there, so there's definitely no way of getting it back, and only having to pay tax on one pin number, I don't see why the villagers can't take that and color that section in.
Because the law says you can't, and it's beyond us, that's state law, it's, you have to go to a variance in order to make that happen, you and I had that discussion before.
Yeah, but I mean, it doesn't make any.
We can't, we can't violate, violate state law.
So the, the process for that is.
Go, go through the.
To change.
Or is only change, that's right.
Thank you, Richard.
Yes, mayor.
We've offered in the past that all the areas waived fees for us, but we're happy to cooperate, we just need to give notices and follow the laws, we can't just color the bands, no.
All right, anybody else? Very good. We move on to unfinished business, I'll start down with, uh, trustee Whitmore.
Yes, uh, mayor, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Long, I would like to address a recent letter mailed out to Mr. Pam Gray with the IDNR, uh, identifying issues that have regarded West Track, North Marine, North Point Marina and other businesses at the Marina, such as Harbor Brewery Beer Garden, my two major concerns regarding this letter is a situation, you know, as a whole, first off, Mr. Long used J W M as a quote, taken together, this sadly shows that Marina is an asset to the village, let alone an economic engine, after explaining to them that they are not contributing to the local economy by isolating tourists, a large majority of tourists who come into Winter Parverse, come here and go straight to the lakefront, mayor, I don't know how you can sit by and allow the village attorney to send a letter regarding your village ran businesses in that manner, I would be extremely embarrassed to have any businesses in my village be handled that way, let alone one of our top revenue drivers, the Marina paid over fifty thousand dollars last year to Winter Parverse, and projections show over sixty-five thousand this year, the number does not include how much Harbor Brewery, Sweet Shop, uh, Yacht Dodge, the pool, and other revenue generators pass into this village, West Track has brought three new businesses in the last four years, within also pays the police department sixty-seven thousand dollars in security, Mr. Long, I think we re, need to remember who works for who in this scenario, my second issue is, Mr. Long, you are picking truly a non-essential fight with the state of Illinois, why on earth do you think our taxpayers are wanting to pick this fight with you, we are in a time of no extra funds for frivolous lawsuits simply created because we feel the need to control every aspect, including state-owned property, I know that you're upset, and I have tried to understand your side of the story, however, maybe letting go over a sign, a stage, maybe some food vendors and some basic ordinances, is better than creating large, especially for a business who is one of the only ones bringing in multiple events every single week, bringing in other businesses to work with them, we cannot get ourselves into an expensive lawsuit, we simply cannot afford, this administration is going to be running good businesses out of this town.
Now trustee Whitmore, I'm not embarrassed at that letter, I'm not embarrassed one bit, because we know what the contract for West Track, they signed when they took over the management, and we, we took our stand, we sent the letter, now we're waiting for IDNR's response, we still haven't received that, so.
And the fundamental problem is, West Track has not actually lived up to the terms of its contract, nor have they lived up to the terms of their lease.
Exactly.
Instead, they have actively attempted to undermine and declare themselves free from all, all village regulations, which we are required by state law to ship, we are required to check out the bill, uh, the building codes, to ensure the safety of people down there, and yet they refuse to obtain building permits, for example, they bring in food trucks from outside, even though food trucks aren't allowed under our current set of ordinances, they don't have local permits, and we don't know whether or not they're actually taking local sales taxes, there's really quite a long story on this, if you care to learn.
Yeah, no, I, I'm quite.
Read the contract.
Yeah, no, I have that, too. Yeah, I have, don't worry.
And I have an analysis of the tax numbers that the board wants to see, I'll share that.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, I also just wanted to congratulate everybody that was here and entering.
Great, thank you. Trustee Hardin.
Just congratulations to, um, Chief Campanella and, uh, the other officers, um, on their promotions, and just, uh, thank you for everybody putting together the work, the work to allow us to meet, um, in person again, and, uh, congratulations to Buddy on his fortieth, your fortieth birthday, right? No, it's Buddy's birthday today, trustee Hardin's birthday, sorry, he's married to her. That's all I have.
Thank you trustee Hardin, trustee Hardin.
Uh, yeah, official welcome to Chief Campanella, congratulations to, uh, all the other promotions in, in the fire department, uh, Greg, this may already be on your radar, but just with, uh, approving the, uh, change in the monthly meetings, I know the newsletter is about to go out, we need to make sure that's reflected there. Uh, and then, as Greg alluded to earlier, we've been meeting to try and look at various policies or ordinances that need updating, uh, at the June meeting, we will be bringing ordinances forward, uh, for the Beer Garden license type, uh, as a pilot program, and so, uh, that'll be coming in June, we've also been looking at the mobile food vendor ordinance, uh, and so prior to our next meeting, Greg is gonna be, uh, reaching out to meet with the, uh, restaurant owners and, and bar owners to, uh, share some of the concepts and, and, uh, kind of vet the ideas there, uh, before we bring that, uh, draft here, and then, uh, also working, looking at the special events ordinance, that's another one of those that, I think was last updated in the seventies, uh, and so just looking at how to modernize that a bit, uh, later this year, then we're continuing to look at some of the other ones like the sign code, uh, shed, building sheds, some of those, some ordinance is required going through the PZB, some will, will come straight here, but we're gonna keep actively looking at those, but in June, we anticipate, uh, at least the, uh, Beer Garden and the, uh, mobile food vendor ordinance is coming here, and that is it for my updates.
Planning and zoning is gonna be very busy. The board.
Some, something comes straight here.
Yes, I, thank you trustee Hardin, trustee White.
Congratulations trustee Hardin.
Yes.
A man of many words over there, you're gonna, you're gonna grow old with those words. Anyway, congratulations to, uh, Rocky Campanella and the other, uh, Martin and Stone for their, for the promotions, and, uh, other than that, I have nothing, I'm looking forward to working with my little buddy Dana.
Thank you trustee. Trustee Levin.
Uh, Shannon, uh, here, I'd like to congratulate Rocky, Chief Campanella, um.
Right.
And, uh, the other promotions over at the, uh, much deserved, um, I appreciate the guys I worked with, you know, and helped train, and Shannon, all that, and so on.
Trustee Levin, trustee Hardin.
Yeah, congratulations, Chief Campanella, um, it's nice to see the support that was here, um, so I'm glad for everybody that got promoted, a lot of the people I've seen start here as, as other trustees, so it's nice to see them move up in the ranks and stay with our fire department, that's the hardest challenge you're gonna have right there, I appreciate the hard work the past chief did, and the hard work you're gonna do, because it's important, that family sense is really important for this village, and so I think, Tim was gonna be here tonight, but he knew it was gonna be a kind of full house, the fire department are coming and stuff, so I told him he really didn't have to come, but, so, we are moving forward with, uh, we have road work on the books, we're gonna start our patching, we have one more Monday of branch pickup, uh, so everybody needs to get their stuff out, one more Monday of that, uh, we're gonna be doing some fire hydrant work, we've, uh, slowly been doing a lot of fire hydrants, a lot of the old ones we've replaced, so we have like, I think, six or seven to try to accomplish, but we couldn't do it with COVID last year because there was a restriction on how many people could work together, so we were restricted, and we couldn't do some of the, uh, emergency situations we had to, but for maintenance, it was frowned upon, so we adhered to that, so. Moving forward, we got big plans for the summer, um, we're still down the guy, but we've been doing great, um, a lot of vacations before antsy, everybody is, we're antsy to get back to meetings, people are antsy to get out and do things, I'm just glad, it's, it's working out for people. The other thing is, it's baseball season, so, again, by my old neighborhood, it was packed again tonight as I came home, so, just watch our kids, there's a lot of kids out with the skate park, on bicycles, so, people, I just ask people to slow down, it's, it's getting warmer, when it gets nice, everybody comes out, so, that's all I got.
Thank you trustee Marbella, a couple things, uh, first and foremost, Rocky, congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Uh, and I'll tell all the firefighters, it came a special, a very special thank you to Hamon Rafat for showing up tonight, I had to see him coming down the stairs, and, wow, amazing, I mean, you know, it's just amazing, what he has been through, and, uh, coming to this tonight says a lot, so, thank him specially, you know, for, and, uh, next item, uh, June fifth, uh, once again, I finally got to finalize, the garden club will be planting, if you see anybody planting out front, or on Seventh Street and Ninth Street, they'll be doing a lot of planting, um, Saturday morning, June fifth, so, and, uh, they actually don't know this, you guys don't know this, but the flowers are seven hundred hours, and the garden clubs donate that this year, because I told them we were a budget, very tight budget, so they're donating that, along with their, uh, volunteer, they planted, so, all we have to do is water, again, they're not doing that, so, all right, that's all I have,